I'd like to welcome you all to this morning's meeting of Remfischer Council, special meeting. I'd like to welcome members of the press and public, if there are any here, and welcome all members to this meeting and thank you for coming along today. Of course, you know, the meeting is or was open to members of the public and copies of the agenda and reports were made available. It is a hybrid meeting, so we have some members joining us from home or work, whatever. And I'd like to ask you just to be patient if they are making a contribution, just in case we have any technical issues. So I'll move on to apologies, please.
Thank you, Provost. We have one apology, and that's from councillor Davidson.
Okay, thank you. Can we have declarations of interest or transparency statements? Councillor Ian McMillan.
Thanks, Provost. Given that Dargaville was mentioned quite a few times, just to, again, let the members know that my son works for BAE Systems, but I've done the objective test on it, and I don't think it prevents me, not that I don't think, I know it doesn't prevent me from taking part in any debate. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McMillan. Any other declarations of interest? Okay, we have none intimated from any members joining us remotely. Okay, before we actually go into the items on the, sorry, councillor Graham Clark. Okay, before we move on to the reports on the agenda, I'd like to just let you all know, in case you don't already, about the sad passing of ex-councillor Bill Binx. Some of you will know Bill. He served a term on the council from 2017 to 2022, and I considered him to be a lovely gentleman while he was here. And I just wanted to let you know about his passing. And I want to add that we send our condolences to his friends and family. I'm sure he will be very, very sadly missed by them, and ask if his group, the Conservative Group, councillor Neil Graham, if you could pass our condolences to his family, if you are in touch with them. Thank you very much, and I'll invite you to say something about councillor Binx.
Thank you, Provost. As you know, Bill, and he's mentioned it in chamber before, he lived a very, he lived a long and very happy life. He started off down in England, and he was also a councillor down in England in his early days, before he moved up to Scotland. He was also a councillor in Eastum Bartonshire in Mulgai between 2007 and 2012, before he moved back to Howwood, where he was a member of Howwood Community Council. Bill was very much a community-minded man. Once he was elected in 2017, he took his responsibilities as a councillor very seriously and done a very good job of standing up for the constituents he represented in that ward. He was very active in the A737 to get works upgraded to there, and I know he was very well-respected throughout the council and also through the community councils and the ward that he represented. Just personally, he was a very good friend to me. I met him for the first time in 2016. And his wealth of knowledge and experience in politics and just life in general, he was a very nice man, a quiet man, but a man that I don't think I've not heard anyone say a bad word about. And I'm sure that certainly Conservative Group, and I'm sure everyone in the chamber that knew him, will miss him very greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Graham. Councillor Andy Doig.
Thanks, Provost. I'd like to also pay tribute to former councillor Bill Binx. Bill was a ward colleague of mine between 2017 and 22. And I think, you know, I'd like to just touch on, he left a political legacy for councillor Neil Graham and his colleagues. Bill was, in fact, the first Tory party representative, I think, in probably nearly 50 years that won, not just won a seat in Cobark and Johnson, the villages, but also, I think he topped the poll in 2017, and probably, I think, had one of the highest first preference votes in the council that year. So although Bill was a Conservative, but he was definitely, he wore his conservatism quite lightly. Provost, I think it's fair to say he was a delight blue variety rather than royal blue. And that came across in the fact that he cooperated with other members in the ward at the time on issues like planning. When he was, he also was, he was the previous, in his term in 2017, 22, he was also a convener of audit, risk and scrutiny, and he did some sterling work there in relation to bus transport, which was a key issue he felt was important to the villages. And he'll be exceptionally missed, I think, especially by Howwood. He was an active member of Howwood Community Council before he became an elected member here. So all condolences to Bill, his former political colleagues and his wider family. Thanks.
Councillor Doig, your kind words. Councillor Ian McMillan.
Thanks, Provost. Yeah, I was very sad to hear the news of Bill's passing the other day. I got to know him when he was a member of the Howwood Community Council. I was one of the elected members in that area, and what a lovely man he was. He was obviously moved on and was successful in getting elected to the Remfischer Council just at the same time as I came off, and I joined the Johnson Community Council. And he really, really worked hard, along with members of the Johnson Community Council, to promote the town, so much so he got really, really involved in the organisation of the gala day. Now, he didn't have to do that, he was a busy man doing his council duties, but he gave up a lot of his time to support the work of the gala committee and seen several successful gala days in Johnson. As I say, he was a lovely man. I first got to meet him when we were picking up rubbish round about Howwood, and I was teamed up with him, and I spent about two hours with him getting to know him, and obviously got to know him pretty well over the next few years. He was a chap, if you've seen him down in Johnson Town Centre, you would go to him to have a blather. He always was quick to have a word, very, very nice man. So condolences from, on behalf of the Labour Group, to his friends and his family. Thank you.
One of the, Bill was a lovely man, and he was a quiet man, but there is also a wee fun fact about him that I was told yesterday, I think it was, that he actually, he was actually born just outside of London during the war, so we can imagine that he, as a young, very young boy, he's seen quite a lot of interesting stuff happening. But the interesting fact is, for a while, that he was actually owner of a restaurant in Spain, and he cooked Spanish food, and he was quite proud of the fact that everyone, all the Spanish people came to eat at his restaurant. So very proud of that, so he should have been. But that's where they met his partner, Betty, and she came in with a friend one day while she was on holiday, and they struck up a friendship and had a long-distance relationship until she, he gave up the restaurant and came over here. So I think perhaps, I don't know whether that's how he ended up here in Scotland, but there's a good chance that that is why he did. So owning a restaurant, he must have had a bit of a quirky personality also, and perhaps that we didn't see a lot because of the serious nature of the council, but I thought I should share that with you, just so that you have a wee different flavour of the man that Bill Binx was. So thank you for all your comments, and as I said, I'd like to send our condolences to his family and friends. Okay, can we move on now to item one, the report, let's see, assets report to those charged with governance, Remfischer Council Group, annual accounts 23 to 24. I'd like to invite Gary Devlin, who is the audit partner, to say a few words. Gary.
Thank you. Many thanks for inviting me along and for arranging this special meeting to consider the annual report on the accounts and the audited accounts. The annual audit of the council represents an important annual milestone in the governance of the council. The council, the accounts show that the council controls over 1.9 billion pounds in assets, spending in gross terms just under 870 million pounds a year. It makes a significant contribution to the people of Remfischer. The audit in that context, and I do understand that the annual audit report is 88 pages long, potentially far too long, maybe this year, it contains lots of additional detail on Dargaville, and I'll come to that in a second. And the accounts themselves are 120 pages of quite densely packed financial data. So I do hope our report cuts through that and provides members with an insight into the annual accounts. The annual audit report covers a few things. The most important is that we intend to issue an unqualified opinion on the annual accounts for the council this year. I think that reflects the significant effort of the finance team in producing high-quality draft accounts, being able to answer all of the audit questions. The audit goes on for over six weeks. It's a very significant and detailed process, and it's a true test of the competence of the finance team. And the finance team have done an excellent job, I have to say, in producing those accounts and in supporting the audits and in achieving that unqualified opinion on the accounts. The accounts do have one material change in them, it's a very technical change relating to the accounting for pensions. It's a big number attached to it, 72.5 million, but that relates to a very technical issue for the first time. The actuary and the actuaries' report included additional detail on the unfunded elements of the pension scheme, and that simply enabled both the finance team and the audit team for the first time to be able to reflect that in the annual accounts. It has no impact on the spending power of the council. The report goes on to discuss in a little bit more detail the section 102 follow-up report from the Accounts Commission this year, the additional details around the cost implications, those forecast cost implications of that issue going forward, and I don't want to talk in detail about that, I'm sure members will have read that. Other aspects in public order are around wider scope issues, particularly around financial management, governance, financial sustainability and best value. And the report points to some of the significant financial challenges facing this council and many public bodies across Scotland at the current time. A feature of our audit, as you can imagine, will be how the council addresses those financial challenges going forward, the impact on services, the continuing focus on achieving best value. And indeed, the Accounts Commission have brought forward the best value audit of the council to spring next year, and we will be looking at that issue in more detail over the course of the next six or seven months. Dargaville continues to be an issue of public interest in the council. We are not expecting any additional reports from Accounts Commission on that issue, so the follow-up report should be the final report in that matter. But of course, it will continue to be a feature of the external audit as the schools are built and as the council addresses the many challenges within the Bowles report that the council has been addressing and responding to. I don't have any other remarks to make on the annual audit report, but of course, happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gary. I'll now invite comments or questions from the members. We have a couple of members who have intimated that they may have a question or a comment. First is Graham Clark, councillor Clark.
Thank you, Provost, and thank you to the auditors for this extensive report. It's well-written and very informative, so thank you for that. The Dargaville debacle has given considerable space in this assets report. It highlights their considerable concern over the estimated net capital cost to the council of around 63 million associated with the provision of education there. Additionally, it clarifies the estimated combined annual revenue impact associated with the council's failure to properly estimate the school role impact, and that's around 2.8 million per annum. Am I right in understanding that this impact on annual revenue expenditure is equivalent to a 3% rise in council tax, and that over 40 years of the projected school life, this amounts to a staggering additional 112 million of payments? The report notes too that the current capital cost of the new primary school in Dargaville is estimated at around 45 million, with the capital cost of the secondary school extension at Park Main's PMHS at 37 million. The council's S75 agreement with the developer, BAE Systems, includes a requirement for the developer to contribute approximately half of the costs associated with the PMHS extension. Does the auditor have assurance that BAE will contribute approximately half of the costs associated with the extension, or is there still a question mark over that? The report also raises a concern that using 45 million of the capital fund to finance the new Dargaville school will seriously diminish the ability of the council to apply that fund to support other capital projects. Again, the Dargaville debacle comes back to bite us. As noted, these additional Dargaville costs are included in the recent medium-term financial plan, which identifies a budget gap of up to 74 million between now and 2028. Given that the council has already exercised savings of 182 million since 2011, I'm finding it hard to share the auditor's confidence that savings that the report assures us will be announced later this year will sustain financial and service sustainability. I know that you give that confidence, but I have question marks about that. And finally, perhaps it would be helpful to all of us if the auditors would further elaborate on their key recommendations on page 15 concerning the need for further priority setting, and in particular, their expressed concern over the way the council tracks planned objective progress to ensure reporting is accurate. Am I correct in thinking this suggests that they're not always accurate at this time? Thank you.
Councillor Clark, there are aspects of the comments that you made, or maybe were two or three questions in there, that I don't think are all relevant to Gary, that Alastair may have to pick up, in particular your reference to council tax. So I will just ask if you just answer what is relevant to your report, Gary, and maybe Alastair can pick up the rest, if that's all right.
So there are a number of questions in there for the external auditor. I started off my remarks by saying that I thought the finance function within the council was operating well, is able to produce good quality accounts, it consistently produces good quality financial forecasts and financial planning documents. There are aspects, and I'm sure you all recognise that in local government, the funding and financing of local government is complex, it's going through quite a lot of change at the minute, and a lot depends on outcomes which are not solely linked to Dargaville about the affordability going forward of services, and the council is not alone in that. We will be paying close attention to the decisions made by the council in priority setting in the coming months and years. In relation to BAE Systems, I think Alastair's probably better answering the question on funding for that. And in relation to savings and priority setting, it's not that we think the council are getting that wrong, we're looking for more nuance and detail in the performance reporting and how the council demonstrates best value through its performance reporting framework. So we're not saying that it's doing anything incorrect, but we're looking for more detail.
Thank you, Gary. Alastair.
Thanks, Provost. Yeah, there were quite a number of questions embedded in your statement there, councillor Clark. I'm not sure I've picked up all of them, but I suppose if it echoes Gary's comments around about the financial management and the financial forecasting of the council being as robust as it possibly can be, given what is a pretty volatile financial environment, as obviously you're aware, councillor Clark, and dealing with the costs of Dargaville is, and I'm not seeking to minimise it, it obviously has an impact in terms of the council's current and future financial position, but that is in the context of the council having to deal with a huge number of financial issues, many of which, well, we to a degree, the costs associated with Dargaville, and just to re-emphasise, I'm not seeking to minimise the costs associated with Dargaville, but I'm saying that this is, it is one of the issues that the council will need to wrestle with over the coming years. The additional revenue costs that are associated with the addressing the situation in Dargaville are, you know, at the moment, we estimate somewhere between one and two million pounds on a net basis. That figure will manifest itself, so we will only reach that figure as those schools are fully occupied, and that could be over a considerable number of years as the rest of the Dargaville development is populated. So it's not, just to give members assurance, it is not a hit in the short term, it is something that will build up over a reasonable number of years, and it is something that, within the financial report that I provided to the previous council meeting, those pressures were incorporated within those figures there, so there's nothing additional over and above the figures that I discussed with council in September. In terms of the capital cost, obviously, council made the decision in September that the capital funding for the new primary school would be funded from the council's investment capital fund. And you're correct, there is an opportunity cost there, that is funding that could have been applied by the council on other issues. But council has taken the decision that that will be the funding source. It's a consequence of addressing the issues that are associated with Dargaville, and it's largely unavoidable to that extent. So hopefully that addresses some of the points that you raise. I appreciate that you brought me a number of questions that you had around about that. Just finally, I think you made a point about savings, and I suppose I would try to provide assurance to members that the management team are working very diligently to try and develop savings options for council to consider in terms of addressing the council's future financial position, as I've outlined in the report in September. That will be, you know, and decisions around about savings options will obviously be a matter for the full council to take over the coming period. But you're right, the council has, and it's highlighted within the external auditor's report, the council has made, you know, very significant savings in the past decade or more, and I don't underestimate the challenge of delivering savings on that scale moving forward. It is going to be a challenging, a challenging period for the council, but hopefully that provides you some assurance, councillor Clark. If I must anything, please come back to me.
Councillor Clark.
No, thank you very much. Yeah, I did make the note that that's the amount, the annual revenue cost, when we get to it, will be equivalent to 3% council tax, and I think that's correct.
Yeah, I hope that's managed to hear your concerns a little bit, the responses you've got. I have confidence in the report, otherwise I wouldn't have brought it to you today. So I hope that's helped you a bit. Okay, councillor James McLaren.
Thank you, Provost. Yes, good morning, Gary. Thank you very much for coming along today. As councillor Clark, I have some questions about Dargaville, and starting off with page nine, which is page five of the assets report, your report. Paragraph two and three says, "The new primary school in Dargaville costs 45 million, and the Park Main's High School extension costs costing 37 million, lest the contribution from BAE gives a net capital cost of 63 million and an anticipated annual interest cost of 1.2 million." Then further down in paragraph six on the same page, "We note that the new Dargaville Primary School is to be funded from the Investment Capital Fund." You then go on to say that this will help the council avoid 3 million in annual interest costs, but by using this fund, this cannot obviously be used to find, to fund other capital projects. So obviously, that's a point well-made, I think. But the council might be avoiding 3 million in interest now, but the demand for other capital projects, such as new schools, will not go away and still needs to be met. We have a number of schools in Remfischer that are either in very poor condition or at the end of life and needing to be knocked down and rebuilt. This annual cost to the council is very likely to come sometime soon, just in a different guise perhaps. Do you not agree with that? I'm sure you do. My other point is about the huge cost of school's transport, which I think is around 6.5 million a year. Dargaville continues to grow, and with another 2,000 houses still to be built means the majority of pupils going to Park Main's will be coming from Bishopton, a school that is having an extension put on to when it is already more than 10 years old. And these buildings don't go on forever. Would it not make more sense, therefore, to build a new secondary school in Bishopton and save on all this school transport cost of taking pupils to Park Main's High School in Erskine? My ward in Bishopton, in which Bishopton sits rather, and has the largest population, currently contributes circa 13 million pounds a year in council tax, which is the highest contribution from any ward. Certainly, the residents of Dargaville feel they should be getting something back for all the council tax they pay when they have to pay a factor fee for work that is included for everyone else in Remfischer, i.e. grass-cutting, emptying litter bins, maintenance of paths, et cetera. And likewise, the watering down of section 75 arrangements that Bishopton residents find very galling. I look forward to hearing your answers to my questions. Thank you.
Gary, as I said before, please only stick to your report, there are a lot of things in that statement you made, James, that are conversations that need to be had for this council, not between yourself and Gary. So if I could just ask you.
Sure, thank you. Just to be clear, as the auditor, I'm definitely not the person that sets the priorities for the council, it's obviously why you're all here, and it would be terrible where I, to put myself in that position. So just a couple of remarks which are contextual. The council has an overall capital programme of 730 million. The council is planning significant investment over the next 10 years or so, and it's part of how the council really has a footprint on the communities that it serves by investing in infrastructure, wherever that may be. And one of the impacts of Dargaville is that you've got reserves to fund that, or you have borrowing to fund it. If you borrow, you have to service that borrow in principal and interest repayments, it's just like a mortgage at home, and I'm sure you understand that perfectly well. If the council, if the section 75 agreement had been handled differently and better, the council could have avoided some of the principal and interest costs of borrowing, or it could have avoided the use of reserves in relation to building the new schools. That's a largely now historic matter, and the council generally is facing a whole range of financial challenges, both in its revenue and capital budget, how it finances that going forward. But it is factual that those challenges have been exacerbated, and I've tried to set those out with some clarity in this report so that everyone is clear about what the impact is. But in the overall, I think I mentioned at the start, you have 1.9 billion pounds worth of assets, you have a 730 million pounds capital programme, you spend 890 million pounds a year. You know, this is a big council with a lot of financial impact and careful management of that going forward is obviously an area of focus for the audit. In relation to choices about Bishopton School or Park Main's High School or any other schools, that's for the council. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Gary. I do have quite a few speakers who wish to be heard. My next one is going to be councillor Gillian Graham. Gillian.
Thank you very much, Provost. I'll kind of keep this, it was only three questions. First of all, thank you very much, Gary and Alastair, for this report, and also thank you very much to the finance team. I know this is an annual thing you have to do, it's an enormous piece of work, and I appreciate that everybody involved in it. My first question is a capital cost, again, it's about Dargaville. So page nine, the second paragraph states that the current capital cost for the new Dargaville primary is estimated at 45 million, the extension to Park Main's is 37 million, and that the council's section 75 agreement includes a requirement for developers to contribute approximately half the costs. Can I check, as part of the section 75 agreement, is the developer not expected to contribute fully half the costs, or have the costs changed? I'm just wondering why there's a bit of vagueness about that one. The second question is about running costs. Page nine, paragraph four talks about that the costs do not include the running costs of the new school, which the council estimates on a net basis with 1.6 million per annum for the new Dargaville primary school and Park Main's High School extension. I mean, it is concerning that about 18 months ago, when we first asked officers about the additional running costs for the new Dargaville, we were advised it would be net, there would be no increased running costs. I mean, that was, and it was nobody here, I have to say, that said that, but it was something that we argued at the time couldn't possibly be correct. I recognise the figures are just estimates at this point in time, but why are the two figures for Dargaville and Park Main's bundled together? It can needs to be broken down. And then the final question is on page forty one, this is probably for Gary, I think. It advises that the unplanned costs associated with addressing Dargaville were required to be addressed as part of the council's medium term financial planning arrangements. I appreciate that. The report notes that the council does not anticipate reporting separately on the financial impact of decisions linked to school provision in Dargaville in wider budgetary reporting in line with normal practices. Given the enormous cost to the public purse, the resulting requirement for increased savings across services, the council needs to be transparent about how the Dargaville debacle has affected these. Indeed, the Accounts Commission has also stated they feel uncertainty remains around the financial implications of previous planning failures relating to Dargaville and their impact on council services. So therefore, my question is relates to the applying normal practice in this matter. In your experience, would you consider the circumstances and consequences of Dargaville to be normal? Thank you.
Thank you. And I think Alistair should answer the questions on BAE Systems. Just to be clear, that's a matter for the council and how the council negotiates with the developer. In relation to reporting, Alison and I have talked about that since this report was drafted. And the Accounts Commission in their follow up report asked the council to be more open and transparent, more generally around how it engages and how it discloses and reports on decision making, including the impact of decisions of this type. So the council will naturally recognise that of public interest and I would expect maybe a higher level of financial reporting on Dargaville going forward. But eventually, it's going to fall apart of just how the council budgets for its education spend and how it reports on that spend. The council has some significant risks going forward. So just to be clear, the schools are not built. And we all know that when you start laying foundations and building major capital projects, they can often, they can often cost more than you expect. So these are estimates and we live in the real world. And I think it will be right that the council continues to recognise the public interest and expenditure in Dargaville School and Park Maines High School and how it reports on that going forward. But I think it's really for Alistair and the council to talk about the other. So thank you.
Alistair. I'll ask Mark to come in about the section seventy five agreement. If you want to just wait and pick up anything that's not addressed.
Thank you, Provost. With regards to the comments on the section seventy five agreement, I would repeat what I've said at previous council meetings. The reference isn't to a specific amount of money and it isn't to a specific percentage. The reference in section seventy five agreement was a contribution to the secondary education cost capped at a two hundred pupil limit. I suspect that the reference to the approximate there is that the proposed extension for Park Maines is four hundred and nine. So it's not an exact two hundred to four hundred, it's two hundred to four hundred and nine. And therefore, the percentage is not exactly fifty percent in terms of how we are viewing the matter. Obviously, there are still issues where if BAE were to choose to seek to challenge some of the work we were doing, for example, if we were, I don't want to take any kind of flippant examples, but if their view was that we were putting in way beyond what was required, clearly they could seek to challenge that and their dispute resolution mechanism set out in the section seventy five. But the reference to the approximate is it's not exactly fifty percent. I think it's forty eight point nine or something we've worked it out at on the basis of the two hundred to four hundred and nine extension.
You okay with those answers, Jill?
That was helpful, Martin. I think possibly the extension at Park Maines, it'll be additional money to try and integrate it as part of the school. So that's probably why the costs are going up and why the percentage change there. I'm a little concerned and I know my colleague, Counselor Smith, has raised about the pupil projections and there's still a risk involved. I still haven't got the final figures for pupil projections.
Counselor Smith, I see his hand up.
Oh, you may ask that question, I'll leave it to you then, Counselor Smith, I want, when you're afraid. There was one other question I think I asked about. Yes, it was about the cost or the running cost for Dargaville and Park Maines as a one point six million estimate at the moment. Appreciate that might change, but I'm just wondering why they're bundled together and why it can't be separated off. That was it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, Alistair.
Yeah. Further on, in the pack of papers and in Gary's report, so it's page forty four of your pack, you will see a table there and I think it's exhibit two is above a table that provides that split, Counselor Graham.
My apologies, sorry, Alistair.
Good. Move on to Counselor Ian McMillan.
Thanks, Provost. Thanks again, Gary, for the report. A lengthy read, but a fairly straightforward and I wouldn't say easy, but not too bad a read on a Sunday afternoon, reading through your reports. So thanks again for that. Quite, I've got a comment and then a question. I think it's interesting to see there continues to be public interest in Dargaville. I think that's an understatement, no criticism of you, but I think that's an understatement because it's widely spoken about in various forums that I attend. And I think Counselor McLaren kind of hinted at it and it's the fallout from it. It's the future effect or future impact it's going to have on some of the services that we provide. And I'm going to speak particularly about the schools. I know we're doing an estate management sort of review at the moment for school builders and I really, really welcome that. I think that's a good thing and long overdue. But I certainly worry about our ability to fund schools that are well past their sell by date. Now, I'm not going to talk about schools in other areas, but there's five councillors in here that represent part of Johnston. So Johnston High School is my main locus here, which is, it's a terrific school, terrific kids and terrific staff, but the building is absolutely awful. It's in a poor, poor condition. And I just worry that, you know, how long we're ever going to see that appearing on a capital programme to say, we're going to start Johnston High School in a particular year. And that is the fallout from this whole sorry situation, Dargaville. The question I've got is to do with council tax freeze. Now, I'm not very sure if this is for Gary or if it's for Alistair. And I don't want to bring the politics into it, the party politics into it. But because we've all, as council administrations, introduced a council tax freeze here. So we're all guilty of doing that. But I would just like to ask what the impact has been over the last whatever ten years of when there's been council tax freezes, what the long term impact that has on the council's ability to run its services. You know, and do know that we've saved one hundred and eighty two million, which is quite an incredible amount since two thousand and eleven. So the question is, what impact do you think the council tax been frozen over the years? Whether it's been by an SNP administration or a Labour administration or demands from the Scottish Government that we freeze the council tax? What long term impact has that had on Renfrewshire council's finances?
Yeah, I'm not sure that's for Gary because that's then you asking his opinion, which might not be, might be accurate, but it may not be accurate. Maybe Alan picking you in the spot, Alan.
Well, thanks, thanks, Provost. I mean, picking up your last question first there, Counselor McMillan. Obviously, over the years where a council tax freeze has been in operation as part of the local government settlement in Scotland, that was associated with conditional funding. If you remember, each year is by means of a compensatory uplift and grant to offset agreement, reach individual council taking a decision to freeze council tax. So that was obviously built into the individual annual budgets that were considered over that period. And obviously, over history, council tax freezes operated across a number of years. So they were incorporated into the budget set by the council in each of those years. And as I said, were associated with some form of compensatory grant conditions. Going back to your earlier points in relation to the wider school estate requirements, obviously, you know, and you referred to the strategic school estate work that's underway. And, you know, that's a substantial piece of work, which is looking at what the requirements are in relation to our long term investment strategy in the learning estate over a twenty, twenty five year period. So the work is progressing well in that, but it has flagged early, you know, when you look at a whole school estate over that length of period, there will be a significant, you know, costs associated with what is envisaged as being required to be invested over that length of time in order to achieve the outcomes that would be targeted from that strategic asset management approach. You know, what I would say and what was made clear in the last report and updates to that is that sort of work needs to be accommodated by a long term strategic financial and funding model to identify quite clearly, as you say, what are the financial consequences of supporting any potential long term investment strategy that emerges from that work. And that will be substantial. But it's important for the council to fully understand that as future investment ambitions are identified from that strategic work, what the financial requirements are in order to sustainably fund and finance that sort of type of programme over the very long term. And obviously, when we look over that period of time, there will be, I'm sure, a range of funding opportunities that will emerge from national arrangements, as there has been up till now. But fundamentally, and going back to the point Gary made earlier on, for any council to undertake a long term investment strategy of that nature will in effect be predominantly funded by borrowing. My borrowing needs to be repaid. It's not a free good. And therefore, as I said, there needs to be a strategic financial model that makes very clear what are the requirements of the council was to follow down a road of strategic investment over the long term in relation to the school estate strategy. And in order to service that borrowing, you need to understand how you're going to pay for it. And therefore, the cost of that need to be built in your long term financial plan. And either those requirements are funded through future increases in resources and or efficiency and other savings over the longer term. So there are consequences to supporting a long term investment of that nature. And as the council looks to potentially adopt that type of strategic investment programme, as I said, there would need to be a very clear strategic financial model underpinned that ensured that over the long term, the council's commitment to deliver such a programme was both affordable but also sustainable in any debt levels that it does carry are sustainable in the long term. What I would say is that the council's current financial position in relation to its borrowing levels are one of the lowest in the country. And that's picked up in Gary's report. So we're coming certainly from a base where our current borrowing levels are not the highest in the country. But nevertheless, when you start to potentially understand the scale of investment that may be required over the long term, nevertheless, the sustainability of any long term programme will be a key risk area that Alistair will be heavily involved in supporting the development of that, that type of strategy. So I hope that gives you some reassurance. And indeed, in relation to audit reports, you members may well see a report released today from the Accounts Commission in relation to Edinburgh. And that very point is being made within that report. So I would draw members' attention to that as a bit of context where our colleagues in Edinburgh are looking at a similar long term programme. Accounts Commissioner, quite rightly flagging up that you need to consider what the long term financial consequences of that are and be clear about how you're going to fund it and indeed, the long term sustainability of any debt levels you take on in relation to deliver a programme of that nature are sustainable over the very long term. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Ian, I hope you're satisfied with that. I think you and I both know that we are in a council now that is, you know, perhaps suffering from decisions that were taken many years ago that perhaps shouldn't have been taken. And I would say, I'm not saying that that was neglectful of councillors back then, but they probably didn't take into consideration that long term impact, negative impact it was going to have on us now. So extremely important, I agree. Counselor Ben Smith.
Thanks very much, Provost. I've got a comment and a question to make. My comment was the point that Counselor Graham touched on, because great minds think alike, that members who aren't on the education or audit board, if not aware, I think, should be that the audit report we have today doesn't take into account, because it can't, the fact that the updated school role model that Edge Analytics are carrying out is not published yet. So the concerns around the cost don't take into that, don't take into account that risk yet because it's late and not included in the report. So I think members should have that at the front of their mind and also members of the public might be concerned about that too. My question is for Gary, you mentioned the audit board yesterday and against day, Gary, just around that best value report. The Account Commission recommended moving that from twenty twenty seven to December this year. And I think you commented that it's now going to be spring twenty twenty five, which is a kind of a delay of six months. I was just wondering why that was the case and if the Accounts Commission are in agreement with that. Thanks.
Gary. Yes, thanks. So there was a recognition at the Accounts Commission meeting and with the external audit team that you need, you need to give the council time to respond effectively to the issues that have been raised in the Dargaville section one or two report. So examples would be, for example, the impact of the training, leadership training that the senior leadership team were going through and how that would impact on future governance in the council. But there are a whole range of recommendations in those reports. And the commission took the view that having the follow up report, then the annual audit report and then another report on best value in December, didn't really allow the council sufficient breathing space and time to assess the impact on the council of all of those recommendations. So it was a conscious decision approved by the Accounts Commission. And I think very sensible to give the council time to just see the impact of the changes the council are trying to make. And then when we come back as the external audit team and assess the best value that the council is delivering, we'll be able to report in the round better, hopefully, on the changes that the council are making and the impact of those changes. So hopefully, that will provide a better quality output and more in the public interest. So that was the thinking behind it, Counselor.
Okay, Counselor, thank you. And Counselor Ian Nicholson.
Thanks, Provost. I'd like to thank Gary for his report as well. And as Counselor McMillan mentioned, the format is very clear and concise. And I think it's a very fair reflection on the current position of this council's paper. I would like to draw members, I mean, I know the focus has been on one particular aspect of it just now. But obviously, in page thirteen, performance in education remains good. I'd like to emphasise the word remains. It's not all dripping negativity that we've been hearing this morning about it. And I think the officers need to be, that needs to be recognised for the good work it goes on. And also on page fifteen, clear strategic plans in council leadership. And when I say leadership, I mean the whole council. So I think we need to maybe pull back a wee bit on to the positive aspects of the reports as well and the accounts. And the buzzword, I tried to count it up, but obviously, the player winner was challenging. It appears in every single paragraph all the way through and obviously stated it. And I think that's been truly reflected in the report as well. So, and again, the other things about the bold report. That's clearly near the completion with regards to the recommendations in it. And that's been a lot of work done. So I'd like to give my thanks not only to the auditors and Gary and his team, but also to the council staff and the financial teams as well for putting together a very comprehensive report. Can I just quickly touch on, I mean, the risk of lowering the tone here with the politics? Counselor Clark had his advocates out and worked out that, you know, nine hundred thousand pound divided by, you know, equals council tax of three percent. And he uses words like staggering and all the rest of it. Simple facts of the matter is, and I don't want to sort of dwell on this too much, but I think it'd be a useful exercise if we pulled out how much PFI has cost this council over the years when it was private financial initiatives to build schools as opposed to borrowing. We've had a discussion today about borrowing costs. I think if I talked about things that happened. I think if I talked about things that happened, Dargaville was, was something that shouldn't have happened, but did happen. The PFI was an intentional harm done to the education finances and we're still paying for it today. I think that would have been a worthwhile exercise to see how many schools we could have built out of that if we'd actually borrowed them one at a time eh and rather than hawk it off to the private sector, put it on the credit cards. That's what happened there. So we're not going to be the cherry pick here, what happened, what didn't happen. Dargaville was a, 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 and I know the favourite word today was, you know, two Ds, the, the Dargaville debacle, but we'll come up with something about PFI as well. It won't go away because we're still paying for it every single year. So I think we need to look at how borrowing costs and I think um eh to put it in the context eh the costs of eh Dargaville with regards to borrowing and I have to eh express my thanks, I think we all should with regards to the officers have tried to mitigate the cost of Dargaville with, through the borrowing regime. So we, we, we borrow as much we need and pay as little as possible back and that's to protect the council taxpayers as well. And we all recognise in this council that Dargaville was a financial disaster eh and it shouldn't have happened. It did happen despite the warnings given by elected members at the time that happened and this administration is where it landed. And this whole council has to be commended about the way it's approached to, to resolve this and that's to deliver a school for the children in Dargaville. That's, I mean, we can argue and debate about how we get about that, but that's the key priority this council always was. As I say, and, and I'm ever so grateful that Park Main's High School wasn't a PFI school because the, the previous SNP administration that built Park Main's, we were insistent, we said to the officers, we're not having PFI. We are building our schools by borrowing costs and that allows us the flexibility to do what we want schools, which we can't do with the PFI schools. And we always knew there was going to be an extension built to Dargaville eh to Park Main's High School for Dargaville. We just didn't know what the extent of it was, obviously. We didn't anticipate it was going to be this massive eh error in the role predictions. So that's all things that are historical, it happens. So good things happened, good decisions were made and then bad decisions were made in certain areas with regards to the school role. And as I say, so we have to, we have to bear all that in mind eh with regards to today, how we're dealing with things today, how we are financing things and it's, it's, it's difficult times for local government just now. And as a council, I think we're all agreed that local government needs to be better resourced and needs to be put on a three-year financial cycle at the very least so we can plan, so we can spend our money wisely, so we can predict as best as possible what our, our capital expenditure is going to be. And just in that, a, 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 a point as well about, we're talking about the borrowing cost for one primary school of forty-three million pound. Yeah, we accept the fact that that should have been borne largely in part by the developer, but in the context of eight hundred million pound capital programme, it's a hefty chunk of change, but it's a huge programme we have. And Renfrewshire council is one of those councils that's quite proud of the fact that we're still investing a lot of capital, investing in our infrastructure. And the next phase of that obviously is we've all agreed is the schools, it's going to be that. And I do admire like, like the members coming in and, you know, pitching for their particular schools, but it has to be done in the context of the whole estate and how that borrowing is going to happen, how that's going to happen over the years and all this. So we'll get to that point. Just a quick final point about eh councillor McLaren about, you know, what do the people at Dargaville get for their money? You know, eh, eh, and the factors fees, ninety percent of Erskine pay factor fees, you know, for, for living in there. It's not unique to Dargaville, it's not unique to that particular area and they get to use the roads and the lights like everybody else does in Renfrewshire and we have to maintain that common purpose of a community that we all pay and support everything that we can possibly do that every community needs. If you start going down the road or saying, well, what does my wee neck, they would just get, we should keep all your council tax and daddy, daddy, da. You want toll barriers up at the end of the red smitty, you know, because you're starting to go to Dargaville and go onto the Erskine Road, so I know your thumbs up there. So that's not going to happen. So again, this, this, this angle that comes all the time about what do we get for council tax at a certain age is, is a road to destruction in my mind because you have to maintain community cohesion across the place and to be fair about how the resources get spent, you know. So I'm just making that point today at the chamber because it was raised. And apart from that, I'd say I'd just like to, again, refer to my, my thanks to the, the audit team and to our staff for producing a very good, not a very good report in the sense of the financial situation we're facing, but a very good report that's easily understandable by elected members and hopefully by the public about where the Renfrewshire council sits just now. Thanks Provost.
Thank you. Just about to give you a round till your five minutes was up. Councillor James McLaren. I've already, you've already been in, so if this is in relation to your report, the report, great, I'll allow you to come in again because it's a special meeting today.
You're very kind, thank you Provost.
Please eh keep it brief.
I will. I, I'm concerned to hear um the comments that, from Mark earlier um and eh they'd just like some clarification. Touched on this earlier. Given that pupil predictions have been incorrect in the past, it seems quite possible therefore that if pupil eh numbers are eh greater than predicted and they have been out very much before, eh we could see the BE contribution reduced to forty percent or less. There seems to be no safeguards in place to protect the council investment here, either for the contribution from BE or the likely underestimate of the cost to build the, the school extension or, or the new primary school. Can we have eh some clarification from Mark on that, please?
I'm going to ask Alan to come in and answer that question. Okay.
Yeah, tha- thanks Provost. I mean, what I'd say, obviously councillor McLaren, you'll know that um in, in response eh the council's been developing eh along eh with our external partner Edge Analytics, the eh approach to long-term eh projections in relation to not just Dargaville but across our whole school of estate and that will be reported to the eh, the whole school of estate eh outcomes will be reported to the cycle of the Education and Children's eh Services Policy Board. Mark's already covered eh the, the basis in which the Park Main's eh section seventy-five contribution is eh, is, is framed. And, and obviously eh that capped eh the contribution from BE at eh two hundred pupils. There's a four hundred and nine eh extension eh being delivered eh in, in relation eh to eh the, the, the school. So the contribution from BE eh will be at the maximum allowable amount under the section seventy-five agreement that exists. So eh obviously the scale of eh extension that eh is involved is significantly above that cap. So eh there eh isn't going to be eh any change in the, the proportion of their, of their contribution to, to that project. So I don't see that eh in any way under, under eh threat. And obviously the, at the moment that project has been delivered and as we go through the eh the key stages of delivering a significant capital project of that nature, the eh costs eh to deliver it are eh being increasingly eh moved to a position of eh greater certainty and that's what eh has been reported eh recently to members and indeed to BE.
Can I come back in, please? Just.
James.
I'm looking to get.
Quickly.
Can, are we, are we saying that the eh, there's not going to be more than four hundred and nine pupils going from, from Bishopton and Dargaville? Or that the, the cap is four hundred and nine and it's not going to increase in, in numbers going to that?
Mark.
Sorry, just to answer that specific eh point Provost, that the council took a decision that the eh total number of pupils at Park Main's would be capped at two thousand. So therefore it's not possible for the school under the current decision made by elected members to go beyond two thousand. So that's why the figure of four oh nine is measured.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, I've seen your hand up, do you still want to come in? Yeah, councillor Bean.
It was just, just a comment to make, Ian Nicholson and eh sorry councillor Nicholson, councillor MacMillan as well about PFI for Ian and eh Johnston High or Ian MacMillan. Well, as he's raised that, I want to raise the fact that eh and again, with all these challenges that I think Ian Nicholson said, the challenge we're going to have in, in my word is going to be the PFI school at St Andrews and yes, you, yourself as well Provost and how we're going to actually fund the extension that we're going to need for that once the building starts, well, it has started at Caplet Hill Road and it's, looks like it's going to start soon at Dyke Bar. But it won't just affect St Andrews, it'll affect all the feeder schools round about like Lochfield, Todd Tombs, St Charles's and, and round about. So it concerns me that we may not have enough, I'll, I'll change it, that things might be difficult to finance what we need at the other schools on the other side of, of eh Renfrewshire. And it's just concerning because as councillor Nicholson said, virtually every, every sentence, every paragraph has got the word challenging in it. And I think that means very, very difficult in plain language and we're going to have to face up to that as a council. And I'm, I'm quite glad that most of us have, have actually not brought it down to political level where I've said it's your fault or it's your fault. It's our fault as a council, we should have done that, we should have done it better and we need to learn from that as a whole council. And we need to start challenging officers and make sure that officers listen to councillors. Thanks Provost.
What we do now, that, that is important. You're absolutely correct. Um, I think, you know, Eddie, the issue that you re- used about the, the pressure on schools, especially from the belt, the, the new build that's going on, there's already a pressure at St Andrews without that. Yeah, but that will hopefully be eh part and parcel of the review in, into the schools and the, the, the capacity, I am assuming, will be also covered in that.
But the problem with that is it's not our school, but I take your point.
It isn't, but we still have to address it. So I'm hoping for more information when we get those reports to us and obviously as a council, we can discuss it then in this chamber. Okay. Okay, so can we agree the report, please? In case you've forgotten, the report was the asset report, item one. Thank you. It moves us on to item two, audited annual accounts twenty-three to twenty-four. Can we agree the report, please? Or do we have any questions or comments? Councillor Clark.
Thank you Provost, just one short comment. On page one hundred and two, looking at improving outcomes for children and young people, I'm delighted to see that there's many things to be thankful for there, but there was one thing that I wasn't aware of eh and I think it's quite important. And there is a note that further work is required in encouraging the uptake of free school meals in both primary and secondary schools. I, I was unaware of this until I read this report. I don't think I've picked this up from education, certainly not picked it up through Fera Renfrewshire. So I just wondered eh where this information came from because eh I don't think it's come to any board as such.
Thank you. Alan, do you want to? Gordon? Gordon? You're it now.
Thanks Provost, thanks councillor Clark. The eh Facilities Management Service, they provide information on school meals via the Finance Policy Board, through the operational reports, so there's a, a continual updates provided on the school meal service eh to the policy board. So happy to pick up with you directly in relation to that work, but in terms of eh wider eh member knowledge eh, that's where that reporting takes place.
Okay.
I'm on the finance board, I just had not ever heard this.
Perhaps eh, perhaps we could ask Gordon if he could give you sight of the most recent report that's been to the finance board and with the areas highlighted that, that concern you. Was, is that, is that okay? All right. Yes, if you could send it to everyone, Gordon, that would be, that would be very helpful. Councillor Lisa Marie Hughes.
Thanks Provost, I'll be very brief and I'm actually echoing exactly what I said at the audit board on Tuesday. But these accounts are a significant piece of work, so I wanted to thank the, the staff for the work they've done to do it. Having read through all of the pages, it's a lot of numbers to look at and I don't know why more of them, um, I don't, I don't, I don't know how you manage. It's a lot. As I'd said on Tuesday as well, my favourite thing about the, the accounts is the foreword, where it talks about the services we deliver, the people we support and what our people do. And, you know, accounts can feel quite dry to those of us who are financial witnesses. I think that the team have done a great job in turning the numbers into the work that we do for people and I just want to thank them for that. I think it's great and really readable, actually. If you've, if you've read the foreword first, it makes, the accounts make sense and I think that shows very good work.
I agree, Lisa Marie, thanks for your, your comments. Okay, can we agree the report, please? Item three is the asset report to those charged with governance, quotes observed trust, annual accounts twenty-three to twenty-four. Can we agree the report, please? And finally, the audited financial statements twenty-three to twenty-four, quotes observed trust. Can we agree the report, please? That concludes the business today. I want to thank Gary Devlin for coming along today, Gary, and for answering the questions that were fired at you. It wasn't too painful, but thanks everyone for your attendance today and we'll see you soon.